Morning. May it please the Court, I'm Jody Siegel. This is Kirsten Anderson. We're with Southern Legal Counsel and we represent the petitioners in this case. This case is about three issues. First, in holding as a matter of law that any claim under Article Nine is a non-justiciable political question, the first DCA clearly erred. Second, in reviewing the evidence, the trial court erred by failing to weigh the evidence against the criteria of the Constitution and by applying improper standards. And third, the trial court erred in finding there was no standing to challenge the Florida tax credit issue.
Let me ask you to kind of, I understand those are the issues you're focusing on here. What is the ultimate relief you're asking for from this proceeding?
Yes, from this proceeding, we want the Court to find that Article Nine is justiciable and enforceable and to remand it with instructions on the proper standard and not just that rational basis is not appropriate, but that the standard should be compliance with the Constitution and to apply what Holmes did, which was use the criterion of uniformity in order to weigh the evidence.
So when it goes back, what relief would you seeking?
Relief from the trial court, you mean?
Yes.
So from the trial court, we're seeking a declaration that the state of the education system, the public education system, and the state has not complied with its constitutional duty in order to provide for a uniform, efficient, and high-quality system of public education and that all children don't have the opportunity to a high-quality education.
But aren't you, just to be cut to the chase, you're not asking for a particular level of funding.
That's correct.
You're requesting that if the trial court, based on a proper standard review and standards, if they find in the heart of the complaint is that it's not meeting its own standards with respect to certain schools, V and X schools, and certain populations, like a great swath of African-Americans, Hispanics, poor students, that they submit a plan for improvement.
That's exactly right.
So I think it's important to understand that because a lot of the past concerns have been, well, the Court should order that 100 million more be spent.
Exactly. We are not asking for specific appropriations. We're not asking for a specific enactment. We are asking for a declaration and then the next step would be that the state would come back with a remedial plan and comply with the declaration.
You also see, it seems to me that if the Court applied, well, first it found it wasn't justiciable. So that's the starting point as far as what you're asking. I mean, you've pointed to, I think, over 20 states that have found similar, if not lower, education articles to be justiciable.
That's correct. That's right.
And so that would be number one. Number two, though, in the judge's findings, the judge applied a, something, a preponderance of the evidence beyond a, what was the standard?
The standard was whether the education policies were rationally related beyond a reasonable doubt to the education system, which is totally the wrong question.
And so you would phrase it as if there's a finding that certainly having F schools over a period of five years cannot, you know, if a judge would find that's not consistent with a high quality.
That's not high quality. It's not uniform and not efficient. That's correct. Okay.
Is it the case that, go back to my question earlier. In your request for relief, don't you request that the remedial plan include necessary studies to determine what resources and standards are necessary to provide a high-quality education for Florida students?
That was in the complaint. That's correct.
So you're essentially, you're saying you want the Court to find it's not up to snuff, but then do studies to figure out what it would take to get it up to snuff? To use a colloquial expression?
As I said in the complaint, that was the wording, but through the pre-trial.
Well, your complaint is kind of sets the stage for things, right?
Well, that sets the stage, but the relief requested is, I mean, what that was asking for was a remedial plan and that's what would be proper. There's a declaration, there's a finding of non-compliance with the Constitution and it's up to the state to do a remedial plan. And that's what we've asked throughout.
Just so we understand, for the whole education system, it's focused on the failing schools and the failing populations.
That's correct. And failing districts, yes. So there's significant disparities, there's significant failures among groups of children and between some districts and other districts. And so that's where some children, we think that a Court can look at that and say, because of these substantial failures by certain groups, you're right, there's not, not every single school or every single child is not receiving a high-quality education. It is about whether certain groups and certain districts are failing to provide that opportunity.
Let me ask this. Assuming that we do find that the language in the Constitution is justiciable, it sounded like you were asking for a de novo standard of review essentially. Is that what you're asking for?
At this level or the?
For the courts, for the judiciary to say, well, in our judgment, this is not high-quality. You need to do this better, you need to do this differently, you need to adopt this policy and make our own independent judgment as to what those things should be.
No. Well, in part, the first part is correct, that the judge would, and do what judges typically do, is weigh the evidence against the criteria of the Constitution and find.
Well, judges particularly have a standard.
Exactly. And that's part of what needs to happen, is that the Constitution of, I mean, the criteria of uniformity needs to be applied. That's the fundamental error that the trial judge did not do.
Well, don't you, I mean, I would think that if a Court were to find language as broad and nonspecific as adequate, efficient, and high-quality to be efficient, to be justiciable, that in order to have any separation of powers whatsoever, you would have to have a very high deferential, very deferential standard of review. Otherwise, we're just going in and saying, spend the money here, do this, this is the right program, based on evidence that's presented. And that just, to me, cannot be right, given that we're supposed to have three separate branches of government.
That's correct. And this does not violate separation of powers because that deference is different in a case that where Holmes interpreted Article Nine as having the mandate but a restriction. So where there's a restriction on the mandate is different than looking at any other unconstitutional act. That's what makes this Article Nine different and that's what makes it justiciable.
I mean, I understand that argument where you're talking about a class-size amendment or something that's very measurable. I mean, we can measure that. But when you're talking about these very vague, really sometimes conflicting, efficient and high-quality standards, how do we provide the deference that the Constitution requires and do what, because rational basis would do that. So what's the standard that you're saying should be applied?
The standard is using the criteria of the Constitution as a guide.
So de novo, we just decide ourselves.
So as in Holmes, did, Holmes said there was not, there were rational policies on both sides. It rejected rational basis and used the criterion of uniformity to judge the legislative act. And that's what we're asking for here, to use the criteria of uniformity and high-quality and efficient to weigh the evidence and find.
So you take, presentations are made to the legislature in the appropriations process, they, their education committee, they debate state policy, they debate appropriations, they come up with a plan, which they have done regularly. I mean, the evidence is they've actually were leaders nationally in terms of education policy is the way the evidence was before the Court. And they come up and they are constantly, every year, trying to adjust and come up with policies. And then you want to come in to Court and present the same or maybe different evidence and say, no, that, you know, we, you want us to decide that based on that evidence, in order to meet this standard, we should do something different than the legislature's decided?
The evidence, first of all, the findings of the Court really aren't proper because they, the Court did not.
But that is what you're essentially asking us to do.
We're asking the Court to use the criteria of high-quality. So for example, the state has already determined what that means and the state has already come up with the measurements. And all we're asking to do is for a Court to be able to look at the evidence and decide that they're not meeting it. And that's a balancing that courts typically do.
I think the argument was in the briefs that that sort of perverse, it would give them an incentive to perhaps, I mean, reduce the, I mean, because it seems like if you want the highest qualities system, you would set the highest standards possible, but then it might be very difficult without, to, I mean, you're not going to meet those standards in every place is at all times. So if the courts are going to say, well, you set the standard, so now you got to do X, Y, and Z to meet it, then they're going to, it seems like, maybe be forced to say, okay, well, we'll just, I don't know. I mean, that seems to be a.
That argument that the state is going to change their standards in bad faith to manipulate the Constitution is.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be in bad faith. It might just be because they decided they set the standards too high. Couldn't that be the case?
They can change the standards.
They set kind of unrealistically high standards.
And they can change the standards in the future. They go through their process and they change the standards, but we have current standards and current measurements that are showing significant disparities and a substantial, we have 670,000 children that are failing reading. So this is not a child or two. This is a systemic failure.
So let me ask you that on this failing, because we hear this, that the state is a leader in education, yet it consistently is in the bottom 10 in funding for education. And the voters in this state, over and over, have asked that there be standards that are, we want high-quality. So when we're saying, when you're, the evidence is that that percentage of children are not meeting, are not able to read a grade level, is that because really at fourth grade, you're really asking them to read a 10th-grade level? Or are they measurable standards that are, what is it? What does that, what does it mean if 50, whatever that percentage was is not, are not?
Yes, there's a lot of different percentages in evidence, but 42% of children across the state are not reading at grade level. We can just take that as one.
Okay, so let me ask you on that. So is it, but what, and maybe we're getting away from this. I understand that you are asking that if they're not, that that's not high-quality. But if they were to say, well, grade level is, we're going to change what grade level is. We have them really, the reason they're not meeting grade level is because we're asking them to, even though they're in fourth grade, that they should read at a 10th-grade level. Is that what we're talking about here? What is the grade, in other words, what does that mean? I mean, I understand the kids in these low-performing schools, the F schools, as well as in other schools, are actually unable to read when they're in third and fourth grade.
Right.
So we're not talking about this being, we're asking our students in this state to become college-educated when they're in sixth grade, that we're so, we have such high standards that have been set.
That's right. I mean, the state has said, this is what kids must learn. And so we are going along with that. That's, the state has said it, the state's measuring it. It's not that, yeah, they're expected to look at college-level material in the third grade. And the reason it's important, we can show that it's also important because the state also holds kids accountable. They retain them. So, yeah, they're not at fourth-grade level to go into fourth grade. They're not at third-grade level. That's why they're retained. Schools are held accountable by giving grades. School districts are held accountable. So the state needs to be held accountable to the same, to the same information, the same data to show that the state is not providing a high-quality. And again, it's not a matter of one.
You know, in this context, isn't part of the problem is that some of these problems are very difficult problems to solve? And there's the idea that there's a magic bullet, people are going to be disagreeing about what actually works. Isn't that true?
There are certainly education debates, yes, but it also is clear, the evidence was very clear about what needed to happen, the conditions that are necessary for children to learn, for at-risk children to learn across the state.
Well, how much of that is on the state as opposed to the local school boards, which are not a party to this, right?
That's correct. That's correct. Because the ultimate responsibility in the Constitution is on the state. And the state sets the policies, they set the school system, they provide the funding, and they're responsible. If a school board, you can't pass the constitutional buck to the school board and say, the school board isn't providing a high-quality, we throw up our hands, we can't do anything about it. They can do something about it and they are the only ones with the responsibility to do something about it.
Let me go back to a point you made earlier about the factual findings. You fault the factual findings of the trial court and you want this to be sent back for proper factual findings.
That's correct.
Why do you fault the factual findings?
The factual findings were made in a constitutional vacuum. So the judge, the trial court looked at this case, said, these terms are not justiciable. Then went ahead and decided, outweighed the facts and made up these findings without being moored to the Constitution. So they, you know, there are facts that just aren't relevant to the question.
The facts are, the facts really, I mean, many of the factual findings are just about, you know, things that have happened in this, I mean, it's just empirically that can be established. And what's wrong with those factual facts?
That's true. It's the conclusions and the weighing of the evidence.
So it's not really so much the findings themselves, because in the findings, the Court says repeatedly, the weight of the evidence shows, the weight of the evidence shows. I mean, over and over again, and I mean, and they're quite extensive factual findings. So it's really, it's, your fault really is more with the conclusions of law than it is with the actual factual findings. Is that correct?
It's both. It starts with, I mean, there are many undisputed factual findings, but the factual findings, the weight of the evidence shows what? I mean, if you're not having the Constitution as a guideline, then the conclusions about what the weight of the evidence is really makes no sense.
The general standard in appellate review, when someone wants to challenge a factual finding, is whether the finding is supported by competent substantial evidence. I mean, I've never seen a context in which that was not the question on appeal. And I could not find any finding where you said it wasn't supported by competent substantial evidence.
We're not challenging the actual findings. We're challenging the conclusions and the weight, and the weighing of them, and that needs to be remanded.
But I mean, the weighing of them, if it's a factual issue, you present your evidence, the other side presents evidence, the fact-finder weighs, and we do not reweigh. So if you're challenging the weighing, then you're in the wrong place.
No, the reweighing, that's right. It needs to be remanded with the guidance.
But why? What, I mean, in order to send it back for more factual findings generally, it's because a factual finding was not supported by competent substantial evidence. You're saying all of them were, you just don't like the way they were weighed.
Well, I'm not going to say all of them, but certainly.
But I mean, you have a point, you have a challenged one.
But they were infected with legal error. We are not challenging the underlying facts necessarily, but by looking at the evidence and making the conclusion that they're rationally related to a system without any regard for, related to what? Related to uniformity would make sense, related to high-quality would make sense, but related to the education system does not.
So your argument really is that the wrong standard was applied, so it needs to go back?
Yes.
Okay. And again, you essentially wanted de novo standing, standard you want.
For the trial court to go back, yes.
For the courts, yeah.
Yes.
You, I mean, for example, just in your rebuttal, what the trial court did after in the final judgment is compare what was going on in Florida with other states. That, this is not about whether we're better than Mississippi or, you know, some other state.
That's right.
So if, and the trial judge also was operating under a assumption that these were non-justiciable issues. And so, and that's important.
That's right.
And the other thing about all of this, you haven't pointed out, but you have in your brief, that 12 to 20 states have faced similar challenges, courts have been able to adjudicate these disputes in a responsible way. So we're not talking about something that's never been done before.
That's right. And the standards that we have provided, the definitions of the uniform and high-quality efficiency, come from not only other states, but from the legislative history and the statutes. And so, yes, you're correct.
You and we have consumed most of your rebuttal time. I will give you two minutes for rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you very much.
May it please the Court, Your Honors. My name's Rocco Testani and I represent the State Board of Education, the Commissioner of Education, and the Florida House and Senate in this case. I'd like to allocate five minutes of time for intervenors' counsel to primarily address the McKay and Florida tax credit issues. The judgment in favor of the state defendant should be approved for many reasons. First and foremost, the plaintiffs do not challenge the trial court's factual findings as to their central theory of liability in this case. And that is, a lack of state funding for education has caused allegedly low student performance across the state. Not only did the plaintiffs not challenge and do not challenge that factual finding, nor did they establish a causal relationship. The trial court concluded after four weeks of trial, hearing from dozens of witnesses, including over 10 experts, that the weight of the evidence demonstrated that the level of resources available in school districts in Florida was not related to performance differences on standardized tests or graduation rates or any other outcome measures. And paragraph 30 of the plaintiff's second amended complaint says, "The overall level of funding is not sufficient to provide a uniform, efficient, safe, secure, high-quality system of free public schools." Now, that finding of fact, and those findings of fact, which are not being challenged, are findings on an empirical question that was debated with expert evidence and thousands of exhibits, and the determination was made that their theory of liability fails. So regardless of burden of proof, regardless of whether it's rational basis or whatever, that factual finding is unaffected by any of that because Judge Reynolds, the trial court judge, found the weight of the evidence supported the state's position on this point.
So in terms of evidentiary standards, the judge, it appears, was just using the lowest standard of preponderance of the evidence. So he, the plaintiff's, is that correct?
Well, with respect to his conclusion.
He didn't require clear and convincing evidence that certain things were true or beyond a reasonable doubt. It was, any factual findings are based on a preponderance of the evidence.
Yeah. What the trial court did was he concluded that the plaintiffs, which took the position in the trial court, that the one statutory enactment that they were challenging in this case was the 2015-16 Appropriations Act. That's the one statutory enactment that the plaintiffs are challenging. They acknowledged in the trial court that it was their burden to establish that that Appropriations Act was unconstitutional beyond a reasonable doubt, which is in line with longstanding Florida law about challenging constitutionality. I point out the causation point, though, because the trial court concluded not that they had, you know, not met some burden of proof, but rather, the weight of the evidence supported the state's position. And the state, of course, had no burden of proof in this case. I merely point that out because if we go back to a trial court with some articulation on something here, that finding will be unaffected by it because the weight of the evidence supported the state's position, which did not have a burden at all in the case.
And that's what I'm talking about. He said that the petitioners had not proven their case to the required standard and I make these findings, and all those findings seem to be just based on a, this is what the evidence showed.
That's correct. And that's why I say, in some great extent here, this is all very academic, because even if they were right about justicibility, which they're not, and even if they were right about the burden of proof, which they're not, they don't win this case ever.
Well, it sounds as though, what you've explained and what you're arguing, is that with regard to the justicibility issue, is that the trial court did consider the constitutional standards and found in your favor. Now, here's what my concern is, that constitutions are principled documents, built on principled and moral words and concepts. And goodness gracious, I mean, we've gone on for centuries trying to define due process, equal protection. And although it may be difficult, principled concepts in a Constitution seem to me to need construction and interpretation, application, and just to try to convert everything as being political is non-responsive. And I'm trying to understand if we look at those kinds of things. It's in modern history that we've had the education things. I mean, we haven't had education as long as we've had governments. And so we've got a lot of experience at some of those, maybe not so much here. But what is it about these principled terms and concepts that make these non-justiciable? Yet we can talk about what due process is, what does it mean to have civil rights, and all those things that courts were designed to interpret constitutions to apply to carry out the will of the people. And that's what we're talking about. The Constitution here is the will of the people. And it may be difficult. It may be sticky and mucky. But why, what makes the difference with this as opposed to those other principled concepts? Because that's what we're talking about.
I think I understand the question.
Okay. Could you help me with that?
I will, because this Court in the Coalition versus Childs case in 1996 was asked to interpret adequate provision shall be made by law language. That was in the pre-98 Amendment Constitution. And what this Court said at the time was that those terms are not inherently meaningful. Now, it should be, and that provision remains in the Constitution today. It is the basis for this claim, that the plaintiffs are claiming the state has not made adequate provision by law for a uniform, efficient, safe, secure, high-quality system. So it's the same provision. What this Court said 22 years ago on that point was that the plaintiffs did not come forward to establish or demonstrate standards that a Court could use to apply the words. And what's important about that.
Well, I thought that's what they were trying to do and failed, but I thought that's what they were doing in this case, is trying to put on standards and what's happening on the ground.
That's right. And so the thing that's important about Coalition is that was decided on a motion to dismiss. Now, in a lot of these cases, the other states are decided on motions to dismiss. These plaintiffs were given seven years of discovery and a four-week trial to come up with standards to guide the trial court, or at least to have evidentiary standards and support for their standards, to present to the trial court, to apply to the facts of the case.
Well, so that's my point. Why is that not acceptable? I mean, you won, but to say that those words are unenforceable because we can't ever know what they mean, because that's only in politics.
Well, that's not quite our position. Our position under the Coalition case is that they had a burden to demonstrate judicially manageable standards supported by evidence and create an appropriate factual context for the trial court to do. That is part of what we said they failed to do, because when you look at not only their complaint, but the evidence they presented and the questions the trial court repeatedly asked of them, what are you asking me to do? How do I know that the system isn't a high-quality system? What is the standard by which we're supposed to measure that? And they were all over the map. And it was mainly argument of counsel. It really wasn't any kind of evidence support. They said high-quality meant above average. That was one of their definitions. Another was, it's not 100% proficiency. Is it 90? Is it more? Is it less? We don't know. Any group of children not performing at grade level is not high-quality. If there's differences between districts, that's not high-quality. And in the First District, they offered a standard that it's the St. John's performance that's the right measure of high-quality. Well, it's the highest-performing district in the state.
But let me make sure I'm understanding something. First of all, you're referring to the Court's 1996 decision.
That's right.
Which predated the 1998 amendment that put in terms that were intended to be judicially interpreted. They also, the First District, relied on a case that, from Pennsylvania, from 1999, even though three months earlier than their decision, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court receded from that and specifically said that it is a judicial duty to interpret constitutional clauses. And every state, and I've looked at every state's Constitution that has these terms, every, so if you're saying, if what you're saying is that even though the judge thought it wasn't justiciable, and even though the First District didn't find it justiciable, that we should find what, that the plaintiffs did not meet their burden of proof and therefore affirm on different reasons, should we interpret the, so what are you asking? Because I think that what I'm hearing is, under any standard, you win, but we're dealing with a greater issue, which is that in 1996, we said it wasn't justiciable because adequate provision couldn't be defined, even though three justices disagreed. And one justice said if there was 30% illiteracy. said if there was 30% illiteracy, that could rise to it. Now, to me, having 42% of our population not reading on grade level, when they're in whatever grade, is not what I'd call high quality. So, going back to this, are you alleging that this dispute under our article, that was as adopted in 1998 by the voters, can never be justiciable?
What I'm saying, Your Honor, in the Pennsylvania case, just quickly, they could have cited any number of cases. Indiana's one, Rhode Island's one, Alabama's one, South, there are several cases, and Illinois uses the word "high quality," and that Supreme Court said it's not justiciable.
But it's the minority view. You would, you're from another state, you have, you know every state's Constitution and what's been done. The minority, that's a minority view, is it not?
It is a minority view on a motion to dismiss. We have a full trial here where they were called upon to put in, and I will tell you, the adequate.
But the First District never got to anything. They said it wasn't justiciable. So, to say that everything else they said is, you know, is, would be dicta.
Well, the judgment should be affirmed or approved if there's a basis for doing so in the record of the lower courts, and there clearly is. In terms of the high-quality point, just quickly, I'm running.
I mean, clearly is, even if we don't reach the issue of justicibility.
Yes.
Right. On this causality.
Causation, which is the central point. You know, these cases are always about money, by the way, and the Coalition case noted this, and we noted this on page 44 of our brief. Same argument was made, "Oh, we're not asking for anything, we're just asking for a declaration. It'll be fine, believe us." If you look at the language there, yeah, they're asking for a declaration, but as you pointed out, Justice, they also want an injunction for studies having to do with a remedy, including what amount of money is needed and what standards. Your Honor, I do want to say one thing just about this question of performance, because it's really important. The theory of performance in the state of Florida, and reform in the state of Florida, is that there will be high standards, there will be ambitious cut scores set to those. Those are set, and they know when they set them that half the kids aren't going to meet them. We're talking about test scores here today from four years ago, for some grades, maybe one grade. We have a different set of standards today, a different set of assessments today. The thing that's important about measuring education, this is, this is why we had a month-long trial, by the way. You know, we had experts come in and say, "How do you measure education over time? Is Florida getting better, even though we know that 45% or 50% aren't meeting Level 3, which does not mean they can't read, by the way, and that was shut down in the trial court to try to shoehorn into Justice Overton's theory?" This is not about illiteracy, it's about levels of reading proficiency. And kids eventually, by the time they graduate, 80% of the kids are graduating from Florida within four years. That means they have to have shown proficiency at Level 3 or above in math and reading. Now, the thing about the other states that's important in the NAEP, the National Assessment Test, why is that important? Why do we even talk about it? Because it's an objective measure. Is the theory of reform right? That is, we're going to raise standards, a lot of kids aren't going to meet it initially, but are the kids learning more and getting smarter? Number one in the nation for free and reduced lunch students and fourth-grade reading. Number one in the nation for Hispanic students, fourth-grade reading. Number five in the nation for African-American students for fourth-grade reading. And number eight in the nation for all students. This wasn't the case 20 years ago. Florida was a laggard, for sure. And so, the theory of reform, which goes to the heart of policymaking, has led to substantial improvements in Florida, and that's not being challenged in this case or on this appeal. And I apologize to my colleague, but I do want to give him a couple minutes to address the choice program.
I think he has five minutes.
Okay. Unless there were other.
You still have.
Sorry, one minute. Oh, is that for me? That's yours. All right. I'm sorry, I was talking fast, and I, so, you know, I think it's very important to point out that the way that the state has approached this, and the separation of powers issue is very real, and again, the Coalition case, we're going to stop short of saying "never." That's what they said. And Justice Overton has had his observation about what situation might occur. I do want to talk about the class size quickly, though, because that is an example built into the Constitution, a very specific direction about what the state is supposed to do and fund. And it says to assure a high-quality education, to assure it, this is what you're supposed to do. And the evidence in this case, and this is why I get back to the evidence, really important, is that the class size amendment had been fully funded, you know, and so, it's complied with. That's undisputed in the case. And so, when we talk about cases, once, you know, kind of, other states have gone down this track, it's perfectly fine, it's safe to do it. New Jersey's a great example. 30 years into their litigation in Abbott, 30 years in, 20 published opinions, they're still at it. And Florida, in the meantime, in 20 years, has flown by New Jersey in terms of student performance outcomes. So, the question is, what's the better model? If we're talking in a sense of some sort of esoteric sense, what's the better model? I would subscribe to you, I would put to you, the better model is what Florida has done, which was to respond immediately legislatively to the 98 Amendment, come up with a plan to improve public schools, that the people can then measure when they go to the voting booths, not only at the legislative level, but the school board level, Dan and their county. So, it has been successful, it has worked. It is not a system that anyone should be concerned is broken or fits into the Justice Overton description, it just isn't. It's a $20 billion system that is now a leading state, a leading state, based on the reaction to the 98 Amendment. So, it was meaningful, it was important, and it was consequential. And so, I would say to you, I think we'd rather be here. I know certainly the free and reduced lunch kids, and the Hispanic students, and the African-American students, which should be better off and are better off in a Florida classroom than they are up in New Jersey, for sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. May it please the court, my name is Ari Barga with the intervenor defendants. The ruling of the First DCA should be affirmed for three basic reasons. First, the appellant's in this case lacks standing to challenge the FTC program. The McKay program, second, is constitutional under this court's previous ruling in Bushvay Holmes. And three, sort of setting aside the merits of the constitutional issues, there are some major jurisdictional flaws that prohibit this court from even getting to the question of whether or not these programs are sort of standalone, on their own constitutional, and that's because they never appropriately pled, appealed, or preserved their arguments with respect to both of those programs. I'll skip first to the discussion of the FTC, the Florida tax credit program, because Miss Segal mentioned in her opening that that was one of the bases for which they're seeking reversal here. The basis for their argument is that tax credits are the functional equivalent of legislative appropriations. This is a position that's been put forward, although roundly rejected, time and again by every court in this country that's considered it, from the U.S. Supreme Court to various state Supreme Courts, and most recently by the First DCA in Florida. To borrow a line from the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Wynn in 2011, private bank accounts are not part of the public treasury, and that's essentially what they're arguing here. These are private funds that pass through from private donors, they go into private scholarship-funding organizations, and then those.
But you're not asking us to address the merits, is that correct? Because now you're going to the merits. I thought your position was that it really wasn't using something that Justice Kennedy teed up for there to be an adjudication on either the FTC or individually on the McKay scholarship, so that we should not address that and leave whatever that stand, as opposed to going into the merits of whether it's constitutionally appropriate.
Sure. Well, I think it's completely unnecessary to get to the merits of whether or not it's constitutionally appropriate, because.
But if we do get to them, you want us to agree with you.
Absolutely, Your Honor.
Yeah, I got it.
Having said that, as this First DCA pointed out, not this First DCA, the First DCA pointed out, there is no taxpayer standing, there is no Rickman special injury standing here. These are positions that are roundly rejected. The testimony that they seek to proffer, I suppose, if this were to go back down on remand, has been excluded in numerous instances, including by the court in New Hampshire.
Well, I don't know why, again, just if we reach the issue of standing, if there's taxpayer standing, I don't know how, if a program operates to essentially deny, you know, that money in the public treasury, because it's being held up to give us a credit, you know, if I gave money, you know, I wanted to give money, this much money to this particular school, I don't know why, again, why there wouldn't be standing, general taxpayer standing for that, because we've really interpreted that, the standing for taxpayer very broadly. So, I think, which even the First District seemed to acknowledge.
The First District may have acknowledged it, but ultimately, they found that there was no taxpayer standing, because tax credits are not the equivalent of legislative appropriations. That's something that courts have sort of uniformly held throughout, and so, there's no reason.
So, who could bring a challenge if there was a problem with the Florida, is it the Florida tax credit? Is that what the FTC stands for?
Yes, that's right, Your Honor.
Okay. If I, you know, who gets to challenge that?
Somebody would have to be able to demonstrate first a constitutional provision that they believed was being violated, and then specifically identify an appropriation that they believed contravened that constitutional provision.
So, basically, it's not challengeable, is what you're saying, because you're never, you know, I don't know, you have to say how much money goes into that versus appropriation, so it doesn't really matter if there's less money for public education because of the Florida tax credit?
They first got a point to a specific appropriation, and of course, the state can't appropriate something that it doesn't have, and that's why it's important that this money.
So, it's not, there could never be a claim, it seems to me, is what you're saying?
Not without identifying an appropriation, which they cannot do in this case, Your Honor. And so, I see that at the end, and I'll conclude, that of course, the plaintiffs here do not have standing to challenge the FTC. The McKay program is the functional equivalent, I would say, of the Scavella program, which was identified in Bushvay Holmes as a program which satisfies constitutional muster in that it is a limited program for students with disabilities, and that the court need not even get to these arguments because of the jurisdictional defects in their briefing. And so, for that, we would respectfully request that the First DCA's opinion be affirmed. Thank you.
I have a lot of points, but I'll try to do the prime one or two here, but on the Florida tax credit, taxpayer standing, there's really two bases, and only one relies on the theory about the public funds and appropriation. Taxpayer standing is for taxing and spending power. If there's a restriction.
Go back to address the procedural problem. Is it true that the trial court ruled that you failed to properly plead those two claims, and that that ruling of the trial court was not specifically appealed to the district court? Is that true?
No. The, well, the first part is that.
No, well.
Well, there's two questions. So, we certainly pled it. We pled a uniformity challenge. What the trial judge did was say that we can't, we did an affirmative summary judgment and did not find we could do that, based on his view that it wasn't in the pleadings, but put that into the final order, and we appealed the final order. So, we didn't have to appeal a denial of a motion for summary judgment, we can't even appeal that. So, we appealed the final judgment, which incorporated that order. So, there is definitely jurisdiction here, there's not a jurisdictional problem.
Do you want to address, to me, the more compelling issue? He's saying, "New Jersey is worse than we are, that even though we're in the last 10 of spending, and even though they've looked at this, because we've got these high standards, yet I look at the findings about the number of children not reading at grade level," and I'm trying to understand this disconnect between how we have this first in the nation grade.
So, first of all, we're talking about facts, and we, you know, we really shouldn't be talking about facts about New Jersey that aren't really a part of the briefs, but there's been dramatic progress there. There's been progress here, but progress isn't the standard, and the standard is not whether we are better, worse than any other state. The standard is whether there are substantial amounts of children in our state that are failing, and that, and whether every district has the same opportunity. So, we have to look at the standards in Florida, and these other standards that, in order for the state to make that proposition that we're better than New Jersey, is based on not our standards, but based on tests that are different types of tests that aren't tied to our standards. We need to look at ours.
You're over time now, but if you want us to take 15 or 20 seconds to sum up.
All right. Yes, we would like the court to send this back, find it justiciable, and send it back so that the court can reweigh with the right constitutional questions, and then we can find out whether we win or not. We don't know whether the weight of the evidence goes one way or the other, because the court used the wrong constitutional standard. We also want this court to find that Article 9 does not, that it limits the legislative taxing power, not just spending power, and therefore, we have standing under the Florida tax credit. Thank you.
Okay, we thank you. We thank all of you for your arguments. The court will now stand in recess for about 10 minutes.
All rise.